So it looks like there's someone here who goes to Willow School. Am I right? Is there someone here?
I'm in the 3rd grade or 9th.
Oh, are there two people who go to?
She was in 2nd and now she's in 3rd.
So there's two people that go to Churchill now? That are here? Yeah? Can you come on up?
I tried to keep him, what do you want?
Okay, come on up. How cute. Okay, so when we start a meeting, this is what happens. I'm supposed to hit this as hard as I can.
She's taking a chance with that.
What a job.
Yep.
So you can each do it twice. You can hit it twice as hard as you want. Come on. Okay, go ahead.
Nice.
Good.
It's a good one.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. You guys did a great job. I'd like to call to order the October 11th, 2022 meeting of the Board of Education for Homewood School District 153. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Bethay?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Here.
Mrs. Haddockhorst?
Here.
Mr. Bosch?
Here.
7th grade.
Thank you. We have approval of minutes from the public hearing of September 27th and the regular meeting of September 27th. Are there any additions or corrections to either set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have future dates.
Yes, just wanted to remind everybody that four weeks from today is Election Day and a new holiday in the state of Illinois. So there is no school on Tuesday, November 8th. And then also that same week on Friday, we have an early release day. So students will be dismissed halfway through and then staff will be in staff development activities that afternoon. And we also have that since that's Veterans Day, we're also able to return to our annual Veterans Day celebration. So there'll be more information coming out about that and that'll be held here at James Hart.
Great, thank you. And tonight's one of our favorite nights. We get to honor a number of people tonight for all kinds of good reasons. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. McAllister.
Yes, this is always one of the best nights of the year because all of you are here. And all of you are here to celebrate, as are we. So I'm going to turn this over to our building principals, each of whom will introduce. We're going to start with our students. Each building has a student to be recognized and then we have several staff members that we want to recognize as well. So I'm going to start with Willow School Principal, Ms. Lawson. If you could come up, make sure you get in front of the microphone so everyone can hear you. And you can face the audience, but you gotta talk on the microphone. You can pull it off to the side if you want.
Do you know why we're here? Do you have any idea? You forgot. This handsome little man is Oliver Green. And Oliver Green, I'm gonna say it, why do you have to stop? But the best student he's here is out of all of the 2nd graders last year, he made the highest gains in reading and math on the STAR test. Out of everybody in 2nd grade. Do you want to clap? So here's the other thing I want you to know. Ali is the model student. He is what every teacher wants to have in their class. Because he works hard, he's determined, and even when things are a little hard, he keeps going. He's curious. He's also one of the nicest and most well-mannered students we've ever had at Willow School. I had the joy every morning of opening the card before him and I would say, "Good morning." And he looks like a morning back. Say, "How are you?" And I would tell him. So I just want to say thank you because you made Mrs. Bones, Mrs. Will's job easy peasy. You are exactly what everybody wants in their classroom.
So, um, I know all that stuff because, um, my grandpa told me all that stuff.
Is your grandpa super smart too? Yeah. He's an artist. You're a pretty good artist too, right? Okay, so all of those important people behind us, that's the Board of Education. So, are we having pictures?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So we have to use some pictures?
And we've got something for him. What, what?
Do we have a resolution?
I... No, we don't have a resolution.
Okay, we have a certificate.
Nope, no, no, we have a certificate.
It's not, um, pictures he just puts up for like, um, I forgot what it was, um, I guess you saw it already, something like that.
Because you're too big for going out. I also gifted us with an amazing gravestone that has his name on it that's in the front office. So I'm ready to see.
Oh, that's cute.
That is great. Ali, if you and your family, you're going to get a picture with your family first and then we'll get other people in the picture. How's that? Right in front of the backstop over here. Ms. Lawson? Ms. Lawson? Ms. Lawson? In front of the backstop.
So sweet.
Oh, wait, one more. We'll get all of us.
Yeah. You guys can stay.
So this is...
Just one family or just us?
Come on.
We'll get all of us.
Congratulations to Ali. We learned those things about him very quickly too. We're so excited he's a bulldog. I have the honor this evening to recognize Blake London. I am so excited to share with you. Churchill last year had a banner year. We had a high percentage of all of our students meeting their growth targets in the area of STAR. This one right here, Blake hit it out of the park in both reading and math. She was at the top of every single, all of our students, especially in the area of reading. I'm so proud of you for the growth that you showed in the area of reading. Now, there's more. Have you seen this smile of you? Blake has this incredible smile. And when I asked about her, to her past teachers, to her classmates, here are some of the things that they said about you. Are you ready? What do you think they said?
Like nice though?
Right on the notes. They said that you were one of the kindest people that they have ever met. That you are funny. That you make people laugh and that you just radiate positivity. I think, I think I see that. The thing that struck me the most from their comments was just how incredibly grateful they were to have Blake a part of their life and their experience at Churchill. You are exactly what it means to be your bulldog best. Always, even when no one's looking. You are who you are. We're so proud of the growth that you showed and the high levels of performance and the growth on STAR. But it's about you as a person and we're just really proud of you. So congratulations.
Blake, your family, if they want to come up for a picture?
It's a big group picture.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Not can anybody make Blake go home, take a shower and figure out what we're gonna have. See how beautiful she is.
Right, right, right.
Okay, and at this time, I'll ask James Hart Principal, Ms. Johnson, to come forward. Unfortunately, her student is not able to be with us tonight, but we still want to hear about him. If you could come up, Ms. Johnson, and share all the positives.
Thank you.
Have a great night, congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. So our student couldn't be here tonight, but I have assured Mom that we're gonna have a celebration on Monday because there was a conflict with their schedule. Our student is Jay Anselmo. He is one of our 8th graders. And honestly, just truly a student. Tried hard effort, all-around great student. And just that positive demeanor. One of the biggest things that, you know, Jay is one of those students that does something like inside and outside of the classroom. And last year, there was an incident where a friend, this being rude, and the way that Jay like stepped up and truly, it was natural. It was just like, no, I had to do this, this was wrong. And honestly, he truly just touched all of us, like listening to him because like a small person, but truly saw something that wasn't right. And truly told us, like, no, this is what I need to do. This is how I need to defend him. And that stuck with all of us. So Jay is our recipient for this year. And again, I promise Mom we are going to have that celebration so she can see him get this award. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you can just stay up here. We'll just transition into the next set of awards.
Before that, I just, I want to say, whenever we give these awards out, I want to say to the parents, this award is for you as well. This award is not just because your student did great things. You had to be there supporting them to do great things. And it's also for our incredible staff. This is an opportunity for you all to really see some of our stars shine. And we appreciate everything that you do to make this happen for these children. Okay.
Very good. And speaking of our incredible staff, so the other fun thing that we get to celebrate tonight are our teachers and our support staff, who, without whom, I guess I should say, our building simply wouldn't be able to function. I've often said, and the principals would agree with this, that our ability to do our jobs is only as easy as the great people that we have working in our buildings. And if you remove them, everything that our district stands for and represents would cease to a halt. So it's really, really important that we find high-quality people, that we keep high-quality people. And tonight, we get to celebrate six of those people in District 153, two from each of our buildings. The award is named after one of our former board members who served... Ms. Marks, how many years did Jerry Morin serve? Lots, right? A long time, yeah. And the Doc Wyler Award is also named after a retired board member. The students just received the Doc Wyler Award named after him. And Jerry Morin, we honored his legacy on the school board by recognizing outstanding staff members. So each year, we're able to bring families and friends forth to recognize some of our outstanding colleagues. So, Ms. Johnson, since you're already standing, I'll have you come up and introduce both of your James Hart winners. Yes, yeah, we have those as well. If you want to, do you just want to say anything or we just want to go with the resolutions? Because we do have the resolutions. Sure, absolutely.
Okay, do you have them in front of you? I do.
Do we have?
Okay, this is the board resolution for the Jerry Morin Educational Excellence Award. Whereas Melissa Campbell has been a valued teacher at James Hart School since August 2019. And whereas Melissa Campbell...
I found this on the web.
Is a resourceful member of the 6th grade team, teaching ELA and science and serving as co-chair of the James Hart PBIS team. And whereas Melissa Campbell is innovative, organized, and a planner. She is always willing to go the extra mile to help her students learn and achieve with some fun added in. Her creativity and problem-solving have helped to rejuvenate our school-wide PBIS program. And whereas Melissa Campbell has high expectations for herself and her students. She personifies excellence in teaching and leadership with her contributions to our school community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School District 153 hereby recognizes Melissa Campbell for her dedication to Homewood students and her academic excellence.
Melissa, would you like to come up? After hearing all those great things, we need to put a name with a face now.
I just want to say, in my role, it's very rare that I hear, let me take that off your plate. Just in terms of everything that you do for our students and out of the classroom, I think you are absolutely amazing and everyone here, and I really think so too. All of your work with PBIS, wow! I need to do that, I need to do that. It has been great, it has been amazing. Thank you so much. It contributes not only in our school community, but also in your classroom with the fun things that you do with the students. You make learning so much fun. They enjoy it, we enjoy it. You're amazing. Thank you.
Picture time, yes.
Because my mom literally advised me to take it. That's what moms do.
I'm undressing the flowers.
That's nice.
Do you want to get a family picture and then we'll jump in?
Well, we can do this as yours first.
Okay, all right, let's do this.
Do yours first.
Office looks like it always has. Big family.
Whereas Jessica Coors has been a valued staff member at James Hart School since August 2018. And whereas Jessica Coors has guided James Hart and Homewood School District 153 through the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Jessica Coors has worked tirelessly to organize and lead the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing process each week, including monitoring results, contacting staff and families, and staying up to date with county, state, and federal mandates. And whereas Jessica Coors approaches each situation with a warm and approachable demeanor and keeps our staff and students' safety and best interests at heart every day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School District 153 hereby recognizes Jessica Coors for her dedication to Homewood students and our school community.
I just wanted to say Jessica and I have a text relationship because of S.H.I.E.L.D. that starts off every Tuesday night and goes through the mornings. But it's been just amazing under her leadership just in terms of our safety and getting through this. I just can't say enough about you in terms of everything you've done for our students and actually doing the role of a nurse in addition to all of this, besides keeping us safe. This was something that we had not planned on, but you jumped in, provided that leadership and just again, kept us all safe. So we are appreciative more than we'll ever know. Thank you so much.
There we go. There we go.
I'll just say a couple of things about Melissa and Jessica. So as is often the case, the best employees are those who come recommended from other employees. And both of them came highly recommended. And I'll never forget when I first heard Melissa's name, when I first met Jessica in the interview process. Both of them, you know, you always have a general idea how somebody's going to turn out during interviews, but ask anyone, interviews are never 100% perfect. But with these two, we hit it out of the park. And, you know, I had the pleasure of working with them closely as principal and they are both everything you heard about tonight and then some. So thank you, both of you, for everything you've done for our district. Much appreciated. Okay, at this time, I will ask Dr. Schnorr. We'll keep the format the same. We'll read our resolutions and then we'll go forward. So from Churchill School, we have Chris Kaverick and Beverly Bollner.
Okay. Whereas Beverly Bollner is a committed and valued member of Churchill School. And whereas Beverly Bollner demonstrates great leadership in building positive relationships with students and staff, promoting a culture in which we joyfully celebrate one another and our experiences within the Churchill community. And whereas Beverly Bollner is admirably strong, flexible, and resourceful. She's always solution-focused in order to ensure that the team succeed for the benefit of our students and families. And whereas Beverly Bollner is a dedicated staff member, deeply respected by her peers. She is sought out for her guidance and support in tough situations. And whereas Beverly Bollner is a caring educator, skilled in supporting student learning, and a thoughtful caretaker of our Churchill vision. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School District 153 hereby recognizes Beverly Bollner for her dedication to Homewood students and her excellence in serving our learning community.
So I have more. Beverly, you joined us in 2020. Before I came on as principal. And Beverly is one of these people, when you meet her, you feel like you've known her forever. She's your best friend in a second. I feel like you've been a part of our Churchill staff forever, for the longest time, because of the way that you've connected with people around you, the kids, the families, and the staff. You, I know that we call you a cheerleader because you cheer us on every day. I'm going to take it a step further. You are a champion. You are a champion for, again, our students, their families, and our staff. Anything that is ever asked of you, you are all in. All in. Whether it's greeting students at the door with a little dance party. Whether it's wearing speakers on a Friday and picking out the tune of the day so that staff members come in ready for a great day. Whether it is getting the resources, the plans together, supporting your teacher, your groups of students, you are an expert at supporting students feeling successful about who they are and what they're doing at Churchill. So I just want to thank you so much for being the caring person that you are, for your leadership. I would not have made it the last three years without your support and your wisdom, your guidance, and everything that you do for our building. So thank you.
It's not that one. That was a student.
I'm gonna miss this one. Yeah, got it, got it, got it, got it, okay.
Okay. Whereas Chris Kaverick has been a teacher at Churchill for seven years, a highly esteemed member of the team and greater Homewood learning community. And whereas Chris Kaverick demonstrates great skill at developing deeply caring and communicative relationships with students, families, and staff that have resulted in a welcoming and inclusive space for all to learn and grow. And whereas Chris Kaverick takes initiative and leads the important work of our school... and leads the important work of our school, always offering essential feedback and advocacy of our team, students, and families while also facilitating strong collaboration and teamwork in challenging situations, and whereas Chris Kaverick is a masterful educator, contributing to the Churchill team a wealth of knowledge and experience that he offers humbly and always in an effort to ensure the success of all, and whereas Chris Kaverick has significantly contributed to our school community by being an outstanding role model and a committed steward and advocate of our Churchill School vision. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School District 153 hereby recognizes Chris Kaverick for his dedication to Homewood students and his excellence in teaching.
Congratulations. Another lifeline, right, over the last three years. Appreciate everything that you've done for us. I still remember our first conversation that we had over the phone because everything was shut down and I was just getting to know all the staff members at Churchill, and we instantly had a connection, right? Basketball, music. It was awesome. If you haven't already picked up the vibe here, Chris is incredibly chill. I wish I was as cool as you were. I'm trying, I'm just saying. Now, I say that because what is so intriguing about what you bring to our team is that what's tied to that coolness is these high expectations that you have for students and for your teammates, and they will do anything to reach them. Our students, our families, our staff, they want to reach those high expectations, and that's a gift. It goes beyond that. It goes deeper than that. Chris has this unwavering belief in his ability to change the lives of the kids that are in front of him, but beyond that, right, in our school. He believes in the kids, he believes in the families, and he believes in what we're trying to create at Churchill. And there are so many things that you do to make that come to life. You have the will and the skill to back all that up, and it's really quite impressive. Last year, just as an example of his leadership and his teamwork, you took on not one new teacher. He measured two because that's what he needed to do. He is continuing to build what we need in this profession, a pipeline of incredible educators, and you're the person to do it. So I want to thank you for that leadership, for your teamwork, and even when you thought maybe I wouldn't want to hear what I needed to hear. I appreciate your honesty. I appreciate you sharing with me your experience and experience of the people around you so that I could support you in being successful and your team at our school. That communication, that honesty, that leadership is a treasure and I value it very much. So thank you for everything you do for us at Churchill. Congratulations. This is your certificate. This is the resolution. We can touch that inside.
One of the joys of my job is that I get to visit all the buildings and get to know people throughout our district. And Churchill, architecturally, is not the easiest building to navigate. You got to make an intentional effort to get some places in Churchill. And Chris, your room is about as extreme as it gets, right? Like, it's buried in the far northeast corner of that campus, and you got to kind of wind around and just, you have to make an intentional effort to find that classroom. And I always do when I'm there because I always enjoy our conversations. And I'd also be remiss if I didn't point out that Chris's wife, Michelle, is also a Churchill Bulldog staff member. And we were incredibly fortunate when you both moved here and we were able to employ both of you, and again, haven't regretted that for a second. And Beverly, the same thing I would say to you. There are some people that I just thoroughly enjoy my conversations with, and every time that I see you, I want to talk to you, and I just want to sit down and engage because it's always a very thoughtful, I always leave a better person than when I arrive, let's put it that way. And the other thing, I happened to be in the office and I got to witness Friday dancing, so it was amazing. So thank you for that. All right. And finally, Melissa, Ms. Lawson, if you could come up and represent, introduce your Willow staff members. I'll do the same thing. I'll give the names. We'll hear the resolutions, and then we can have you talk a little bit about them. So Yolanda Collins and Eleanor Yankaway.
Whereas Yolanda Collins is a valued member of the Building Guiding Coalition and Leadership Team. Whereas Yolanda Collins is dedicated to creating lessons with high student engagement. Whereas Yolanda Collins is a member of the District Incident Response Team, and whereas Yolanda Collins incorporates social justice, equity, and history into her teaching. And whereas Yolanda Collins is an essential member of the district's Math Committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School District 153 hereby recognizes Yolanda Collins for her dedication to Homewood students and her academic excellence.
So I learned from doing this for just a few years that if I give them all the juicy stuff, then when I come up here, I don't get to say all the really fun stuff. So one of the first things I want to point out is Yolanda's been at Willow for one year and has already accomplished all of that in our district. When I think of Yolanda, I do see her colleagues. I think of committees, which we just talked about. I think of cultural relevance that she weaves into all of her lessons and that includes the minute details. For example, Frida Kahlo had mustache hair in a hallway display because her kids insisted on it because the discussion was so in-depth. Or when she did Henry's Freedom Box, that they learned all of the locations that the box went on the map, and they developed what it would be like to be in that box, and what could they do, and how could they improve it, and how would they make their own. So she takes that historical learning and brings it into what they're doing and what they're learning. And they have no idea that they're having fun, or that they know they're having fun, wait, they have no idea that they're learning. One of the other Cs I think of with her is critters. Her room is the classroom that has fish and turtles and, what am I missing?
Tadpoles.
Tadpoles. A lot of fish, multiplying fish. It's like a math lesson. But again, it draws the kids in, and it teaches them responsibility, and it teaches them the value of taking care of someone else and responsibility. When I think of the Cs, I think of the cricket queen. And by cricket, I don't mean small, chirpy animal. I mean that machine that she creates out t-shirts and capes and banners and decorations and nameplates for her children. So not only is it highly engaging in curriculum, it's also a really aesthetically pleasing room that you walk into and are like, I want to sit down and be frivolous. I think the most relevant thing for the district is Yolanda was also in her first year with Willow, not her first year teaching, but her first year with Willow, accepted into the Roosevelt Principles Program. So you are looking at very likely one of the most outstanding teacher administrators in the district.
Yeah. Dynamo.
Willow family.
Maybe a little. Oh, now you don't. Okay. I thought you had a secret.
Okay. Whereas Eleanor Yankaway has been a dedicated employee for over 10 years. Whereas Eleanor Yankaway makes sure that her area is extra clean. Whereas Eleanor Yankaway is always the first to volunteer to help. Whereas Eleanor Yankaway takes a personal interest in those with whom she works, and whereas Eleanor Yankaway trained our new head custodian this summer during construction. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School District 153 hereby recognizes Eleanor Yankaway for her dedication to Homewood students and her academic excellence.
I will try to talk about Eleanor without crying. She's been in the district for 10 years. We hired her at one position and decided that we needed her in a much greater capacity, and she is truly the backbone of Willow. She is not our head custodian, and that is her choice because we would have done that a long time ago if we could. She takes pride in what she does, and her area is the most meticulous in the building. I would have walked down the hallway because the clean smell is like an air freshener. It's delightful. She sees the details. She takes care of her people. She takes care of her kids. She advocates. She stands up for what she believes. She lets you know. Eleanor is the person who, when she checks at each shift, would always come by and say, do you need me to do anything? Can I do anything? Can I carry anything for you? And I always thought, oh my gosh, that's great. And then I follow her down the hallway, and she does it for everybody. I don't have to deal. But Eleanor, this summer, we had construction, so the building was a mess like it has never been. And we also had a brand new head custodian who has never had any former custodian job prior to this. So Eleanor took on making sure that we got done, making sure that it looked as good as it was going to look, make sure that he learned his position and what to do, and did it all with grace, a smile, a lot of yes ma'ams, which we're still trying to break part of the habit of. Good luck.
So everything you heard about our Willow staff, I'll start with Eleanor. And, you know, custodians are often underappreciated until they don't do what we need them to do, right? What we want them to do. And the second that happens, everybody hears about it, right? So the fact that not only Eleanor excels at what she does, but she has people who literally demand her, right? Like, don't even think about moving Eleanor to a different part of the building. And you know who you are. I see them. Eleanor, that speaks to everything that you bring. And again, our buildings are beautiful and safe because of people like you. So thank you so much for your efforts. And Yolanda, you heard a lot about Yolanda in the short time she's been here. I'll just share one other thing. So the first day of school, Teacher Institute, I walk in her room, and literally there's a sewing machine in her room. And I'm like, what is she doing? It's not the cricket. It's not the cricket. It's a sewing machine. I said, what, Yolanda, what's going on? Well, she wouldn't tell me. Someone else told me. She is literally sewing the little sleeves that you put on the back of student chairs where they can put their books and their pencils and everything. She's sewing classroom sets of those for our staff who don't have them. And she's not going to tell you this, but I think she made like four classroom sets of those things, like 100 of these little things to put on the back of people's desks, hand-sewn by Yolanda, because she doesn't have anything else to do on the first day of school, right? So Yolanda, that just further reinforces the type of person that you are and what you bring to us. So thank you so much for that.
And I want to thank all of our staff who were honored tonight and who came to honor the staff because those of you that were honored, you set a wonderful example in your buildings. You are one example among many in your buildings, but we are thrilled to get to... But we are thrilled to get to honor you tonight. And I also want to say that I learned how to say that that machine's called a cricket. I thought it was a cry-cop. I had no idea. I'm glad I never had to ask anybody what it was. Now I know. I had no idea. So I learned something new. Okay. You all are all, of course, as always, welcome to stay for our entire board meeting or any part of it you want to stay for. But you also know that if you have other things you want to do tonight, we will not be offended if you want to leave.
No percent.
How do I look, baby? That's a good question.
They hate.
There we go. It was Alex's. Okay. So I didn't have the attachments when I got locked out.
You're gonna get to know me that in my life, if certain things are off, I can't let, I try. It's the kid. The vision. What's gonna work?
Taking a shower.
I'm taking a wipe, man, it's Friday.
Stayed away. That was kind of like.
Why did I have to go to the toilet? It's a long way.
He was, they left and he was still here. Yeah, he just left. I'm like, congratulations. I think they know what that is. So good to see you, congratulations. I wonder if they're all so happy.
And sing.
Before you talk.
Yeah. Is there anyone in the audience who came to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, and we have not had questions or concerns raised by the audience at our previous meeting, so we don't have any responses. Are there any board members who have any reports from any meetings you've attended?
I have one. The Personnel Committee met last Thursday evening, well, two-thirds, and a visitor. Sorry, Deb.
Wasn't invited, Jim.
Don't take it for you.
It's a whole thing.
I've been all mad, Scott, Dr. McAllister, it's my fault. We were both talking to each other, couldn't figure, I don't know. Sorry about that, that was unintentional. But thank you for joining us.
Sure, thank you, you're very welcome.
But in the, just a brief, because Dr. McAllister's gonna cover it. The purpose of the meeting was to begin to discuss if the referendum doesn't pass, the district's gonna be faced with, and we've talked about this, upwards of $2 million plus dollars that we're gonna have to cut from the budget. And Dr. McAllister walked us through his process, that he worked with members of his administrative team, looking at where that could possibly come in, while trying to minimize the impact in the classroom as much as possible, so.
Hey, thank you. Any other board members have any reports? All right, then we have the superintendent's report.
Well, I can certainly give my report. Anybody wanna give this to stay out of this first game? Because if not, I'll just, I'll just do it. You all have it in your notebooks, if you wanna look at it that way. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just talk so that way it can be heard. We have a PowerPoint here, and just for our staff members who are in attendance, this PowerPoint is going to be sent out tomorrow. So you'll see the exact thing that I'm sharing tonight. Are all of you able to see it on your devices? Well, Dr. Schnorr attempts to give me a rundown here. I'll just talk a little bit about the process that we used when making these difficult decisions. So we started with the knowledge that we have a deficit of about $2 million. And we've talked about that extensively, the structural deficit that has existed for year after year after year. And we funded that through referendum in 2011 and a second one in 2016. So at this point, we are now seeking a permanent solution to our funding problem. And so I asked the building principals, knowing this $2 million was the number we had to hit. I asked the principals each to send me a list of about $600,000 in savings per building. And then I looked at the district office and I saw an additional $300,000 in savings, which would give us about $2.1 million in total savings. I took their lists and then I combined them. And I tried to prioritize based on each building preference, a list that got us to that number of $2.1 million. And then we sat back down with the principals and our district-level administrators and went through that list one more time and moved items up and down. So what we ended up with, what I'm going to share with you this evening, is a planned reduction if the referendum on November 8th is not successful. So the first thing is, what is the, what was kind of the goal? And what was the guiding philosophy behind this as we made the plan? And the first thing was, we knew the dollar number we had to hit, yeah, was $2 million. No dice? That's all right. We knew the dollar round was $2 million. The other thing, which was really, really important, to the greatest extent possible, how can we not impact the classroom? Like, what can we cut that doesn't have a direct impact, and I'll point back here, on classroom teachers, right? And unfortunately, you realize when a budget is 80% people, that if you start cutting $2 million, you're undoubtedly going to get to the point where you're impacting people, right? You're cutting staffing positions. And so that was kind of the philosophy that we had, was how can we minimize the impact on classroom instruction? So I'm gonna start with the district office. So there are 17 district-level administrators and building-level administrators. That includes three in each building, I'm sorry, two in each building, a total of six, and then 11 others. And then there are people who work within five different departments in the district office. Operations and Maintenance, who handles all of our buildings and grounds and custodial. Technology. Student Support Services. Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment, what we call CIA, and the Business Office. So all the offices that are literally in the district office suite there. And four of the five areas had a reduction proposal that you see in front of you. Four of the five departments are proposing a reduction. The one that did not have a proposed reduction is Student Support Services. And that's because, A, it constitutes the largest number of personnel between teachers and assistants that work in that department. And because of IEPs, there's also a lot of legalities that we need to be sure we are meeting. And so when looking at the reductions in the other areas, there are a total of five positions that I'm recommending the elimination of if need be, for a total of about $300,000 is what the salary and benefit costs will be for those five positions. I would also point out that those five positions constitute, the $300,000 specifically, constitute about 13% of the overall cost reduction that is being proposed. In a typical year, pre-COVID, district office staff and salaries and benefits account for anywhere from 6% to 8% of our overall operating budget. So the reductions in district office staffing are about double proportionally what they constitute in our budget. And again, that goes back to this idea of trying to find the least impact on classroom instruction as possible. Any questions on what I've shared so far?
No.
And I'll offer each of these areas. Next, we started to say, okay, there are certain things that the state requires that we offer. And unfortunately, that list of mandates never gets smaller, right? They just keep adding what we need to do, what you have to do. One of the things that makes our district incredibly unique, and what I feel is special place for our kids and families, is that we offer so much more than just the requirements. And unfortunately, we don't have the revenue to support that unless we get this referendum passed. And so the next area of cuts that are being proposed is anything that happens outside of the school day. And so extracurricular activities, which means clubs and sports. All of those things, again, that our kids participate in and that I can speak to my experience as a student, often what makes school fun, right? It's the thing that draws you in. And unfortunately, those are the types of programs that are often the first to go if funding is not available. And so the reduction of all extracurricular clubs and activities would save approximately $180,000 in stipends that staff receive for sponsoring those activities and another $40,000 in busing costs. So all said and told, about $220,000. Also, another, what I would call a bedrock of our community, and something that is incredibly important to our families and to our kids, and what I would argue in humankind, right? And that's the fine arts. I think what separates civilized societies from other places is the celebration of the arts. Music and choir orchestra. And again, as difficult as it is for me to make this recommendation, when looking at the definition of what happens during the school day which is required and what falls outside the school day which makes us a great place, but if we don't have the money to support it, it is tough to argue to continue it in lieu of core classroom instruction. So I'm recommending the elimination of band choir and orchestra programming, which with salaries and program costs, because those are not inexpensive programs to run. That would yield a savings of about $400,000. So between extracurricular activities and co-curricular activities, you're looking at a savings of about $620,000, which is roughly 30% of the number that we need to get to. So it's a big chunk, but it is certainly, you know, like I said, it's about a third. It gets us moving in the right direction, but it does not close this gap. So between administrative and between extracurricular, we're looking at roughly 43% of the cost savings that we need. So now you start to get into other areas. And again, one of the things, I'm looking at the educators in the room and maybe you up here, or an education is your line is also, your profession. One of the things that has changed in our profession so much is the emphasis on small group instruction for kids who need it or for, well, for kids who need it in one of two ways. Either they are working below grade level and we're trying to get them up to grade level. Or for kids who have already met the standard and we're trying to enrich their educational experience. And we call these people interventionists. Many times, the teachers that you see here have a classroom of, let's say, 20 kids. But throughout the day, kids are being pulled and worked with by reading specialists and math specialists in small group settings. I had the opportunity to observe one of our reading teachers at Willow just last week and to watch her interact with four little ones, literally teaching kids how to read, right? And it broke my heart in the back of my mind to think, this is the type of experience that we will not be able to afford if we don't get a successful referendum. Those are the types of things that will go back to the 1980s model when I started, where you've got 25 kids, some of whom are really, really gifted, some of whom are really, really below grade level and struggling. And your job as a teacher is to teach the best you can to this wide, wide ability of areas. Not an easy thing to do. They do it every day, but it's going to become more and more challenging with the proposed elimination of anywhere from two to four intervention positions in each building, using an estimated cost of $50,000 per teacher that would save about $400,000. And unfortunately, even with those cuts, we're still not to the $2 million that we need. So we've done everything we can around the edges outside of the school day and in small group instruction to get to our $2 million gap. And now we're to the point where we are impacting core classroom instruction. So one of the things that we've always believed in is trying to maintain class sizes that are ideal. Everyone's definition of ideal obviously depends. But in our district, ask them, when you get 21 kindergarters in a room, that's a challenge. And the difference between 21 and 18 is big. There's a lot of districts that run 24, 25, 26 as the norm. And as you get older, class sizes get bigger, that's true anywhere. But at the middle school level, it's not uncommon to see class sizes 25, 27, 30, right? So unfortunately, one of the ways you save money is you eliminate core classroom instruction. And you take the same number of kids in first grade, just making up a grade, and instead of dividing by nine sections, you divide by eight sections. So I'm recommending the elimination of one grade-level teacher in grades K through 5. Six teachers total. And at James Hart, because staffing is done differently, it's not a classroom, a homeroom teacher with one set of kids. It's done in teams and the kids transfer, you know, throughout the day between content areas. But the reduction of two classroom teachers at James Hart, which will also result in bigger class sizes there. So the overall cost savings with all of those eliminations, again, that's eight teachers, a total of $400,000. Another thing that we believe strongly in, asking of the teachers, asking of their parents, is PE every day by people who are certified to teach PE. It's not an afterthought, and it doesn't just happen two days a week, it happens every day. Kids need the physical activity, they need that interaction. Unfortunately, again, that would be something that we would have to look at the state recommendation and staff according to the state recommendation, not what we feel is best. So recommending the elimination of two PE positions district-wide for a total of $100,000. We currently employ permanent substitute teachers because staffing, covering classes is a problem every day. So it's good to have a certified staff member on staff. And we use them every day because we always have vacancies that we can't fill. So we would have to get rid of our permanent subpositions. We would still need coverage, we would still pay people, but we would be able to save some of the money that we're currently spending on certified substitute teachers. And then finally, we have other certified support staff in a variety of positions in each building. And I'm recommending the elimination of one of those positions for a total of $150,000. So between all of those areas, we have gotten just over $2 million. The final area of recommended cuts would be classroom assistants. We had the honor tonight of seeing some really talented classroom assistants who were recognized because the work they do is so incredibly important. If you're sitting in a room and you have one student who is not doing what they're supposed to do, it's really nice to have a classroom assistant who can tend to that student while the teacher is still able to conduct class. So we believe strongly in having assistants. But again, we staff with assistants better than most places. I hear that time and time again from staff who are new to our district. I hear that time and time again from staff who are new to our district. So recommending the elimination of four assistant positions district-wide. And then also one clerical person in each building, which would save between those two areas another $250,000. So all said and told, the savings that I'm recommending, if, again, doomsday scenario, total of about $2.3 million, that's actually more than the $2 million we need to cut, okay? So the 2.3 gives us a little bit of flexibility that if on November 9th we wake up and we realize we need to start looking at this, that we have some degree of conversation on, okay, we've got a little bit of flexibility here, but not much. And there's no single area on there that we could just say, put it all back and we'll be fine, right? $2 million, I want to impress upon people, is a huge number to try and to close. It really is. But I also want to emphasize through your support over the years, we staff this way because we believe it's important. And that's the message that we need our community to hear, is that we staff based on what's best for today. And everything that I talked about tonight breaks my heart. There's no other way to put it, that this is the last thing I ever want to do. But I also have an obligation in this position to present a budget to the state, or you to present to the state, that is justice. And so that's our reality. We either get additional revenue to pay for all of these great programs that we offer, or we have to reduce our spending and use the revenue that we have. So you have that presentation in front of you. I apologize that it wasn't able to get put up here for our audience members, but like I said, I will send that out to the entire staff. And our plan will be to share this with the community as well. Because up to this point, all that we have said is $2 million. But with the help of the individuals seated in the back and conversations with board members, we've come up with a more specific plan. Because we need to be prepared. You know, I don't want to start thinking on November 9th if that's what we have to do. Any questions from anybody on the board in the audience?
Questions from anyone? Anyone in the audience have any questions?
I want to add to Dr. McAllister's comments. When we decided to put the referendum on the ballot, and we unanimously decided to do that, it was to save us from this scenario. And Dr. McAllister has said it makes, it breaks his heart. It makes me nauseous, quite frankly. It makes me nauseous to think that this is what our school district could look like. Because every single position in the district is valued. Every single position is something we need to provide, to contribute to students' success academically, emotionally, and socially. There isn't one person working in this district that doesn't ultimately contribute to our students' success and doesn't create our vision of what Homewood Schools should be. A place that kids get an enriched education and opportunities and get exposed to things. And we go so far beyond what is required for an education. Because frankly, what's required for an education isn't enough for kids. It's just not enough. So I'm hoping that four weeks from tonight, it's 8:15. The polls will have been closed for an hour and 15 minutes. I'm hoping that all of the hard work that is being put in to making sure that we can continue to be the district that we want to be pays off. It's not a lot of time, and I really appreciate the job that Citizens for Homewood Schools is doing. They are working tirelessly, tirelessly to make sure that our schools stay the way we want our schools to be. And they are working with far fewer volunteers than we've had in the past. People are fatigued. I know we are all fatigued from doing referendums every six or seven years. But this is not a time to be tired. It's a time to do what needs to be done and make sure that in four weeks, we know that our school district has the future that we wanted to have for the next 30 years. Because this will put an end to the cycle of referendums. So I appreciate the heartbreaking and nauseating work that you did with the principals. And I hope that we get to tear that piece of paper up.
Sorry, I say a few things. Yeah, so I guess a couple of thoughts I had, you know, in taking a look at this prior to the meeting conversations with Dr. McAllister and stuff like that. You know, this is, I can't say any better than it's heartbreaking. I know over the past several years, since I've been on the board, this has always been a topic of, you know, how do we potentially solve our structural deficit? You know, we've been fortunate in the past with our referendums, the working cash referendums, that we've been able to address that issue. But, you know, obviously, time has come again where we need to do it again. And I think the hardest part of this is, you know, in the past, we've talked in very big generalities in terms of what types of positions, how do we do this, where do we do it, and so on. But to actually see this now written down the way it is, where we're actually talking about specific positions in specific schools and, you know, whether it's in a classroom or assistants and stuff like that. I think it's, this is a lot more real and a lot more difficult of a conversation and my, for me personally, than ones that I know I've had with folks in the past, where it's been generalities, you know, where you just do something on the back of the envelope. But this is actually something now where Dr. McAllister and the administrators have actually taken the time to look at various positions and actual salaries and try and figure out what it is. So it's not something that I ever, I remember seeing something like this in 2016, but I think this is, in my opinion, I think this is a little more dire now, just because of where we are. But I think it's also good to, it's good to actually see positions and dollar amounts, just for my own sake of mind. Not that it's a good thing, but just for me to help visualize and frame what potentially we're faced with, I guess. So good from the standpoint that we have, you know, a little more definitive or a little more finite information than we, than just on the back of an envelope or back of a napkin in the past, so.
If I can continue, I think that's important also for our community, our school community and our broader district to see what exactly will be affected here. I've been on the board since 2008. My kids graduated from Hart in 2009 and 2012. I've not walked away from it because this is always such a positive place to be. I love 153. I love seeing what our teachers do and how our kids grow. I love all of the young families that have moved to my block and all of the littles that live on my block now and are counting on this 153 education. And I hope we headed out of the park. I can't talk about being nauseous. I can't. I just can't.
Now Deb, if I can jump in on that and say, we know how much this changes. If this doesn't pass, how much this changes. Not just this district tremendously, but this community tremendously. I believe, I moved here 25 years ago to send my three daughters through these schools. And it's not just 153, right? Although that's where that biggest impact's going to be, we've got to make sure that this happens for these kids. Music for these kids, starting at such a young age. It's a pipeline. Supports, accelerated support for our students. This is what makes our students unique. I work at the high school. If this doesn't happen here, it changes this district, it changes our community, and that also includes the high school. The foundations of our community, our District 153 and 233, from my perspective. And a lot of people that we're talking to out there, the same. Our kids deserve this. Our teachers deserve this. You guys, educators, you're able to do your jobs because of the support that our community has provided, because of the work that you guys do, our district office, our administrators do, and our community has done for the last two referendums. We said, but we knew this deficit was going to be there. And now we're addressing this. I was on a podcast last night and Mike made it very clear, look at, this passes. We've solved this problem hopefully for potentially 20-plus years, and we can continue to go on. If this doesn't pass, this is real. As a lifetime educator, as a community member, this is real. There's a crisis in education throughout this country. And in that crisis, there are locations that I think are safe havens for the profession, for our professional educators, and for our students and families. That's why people come to our district. They come for a number of reasons. If this doesn't pass, in many ways, I feel like we potentially become the same as all those other districts out there. That uniqueness?
Gone.
Gone. We've got to get together on this as a community, and we've got to make sure that this message comes out in order to maintain all that we do, have done, currently do, and want to continue to do for this district and our students and families. Thanks.
Three doors as well. 20 years ago, moving to the district. And, you know, we had our checklist of things that we wanted, right? And a lot of people didn't realize it, but the Homewood community had the largest concentration of park districts beyond Naperville. The other thing is the educational system. And you said something, Dr. McAllister, thank you, well done. It does make me nauseous as well, but I would just say 60%. So when I joined the board four years ago, under different superintendent, who was in tiers with our chief business officer, and we were in F and P meeting, and I was trying to understand. I said, well, wait a minute, we're tier one, and we have students, I know we have students with need, free reduced lunch and so on, and we're only receiving 60% of what is required to provide the best. And then something came along called evidence-based funding. And that's subsequent to the Illinois lottery. And then followed by medicinal marijuana. And all these things are supposed to help us. And so I don't want it to be missing, the community, that we could have stopped saying yes on personnel every meeting. Every meeting, I'm a fine-ass person by nature, could have said stop. But then what got explained to me was the difference between a deficit and a structural deficit. Structural deficit meaning that municipalities, federal or state, that your revenues are going to fall short. And because I was told, and educated myself in our last referendum, there was a temporary fix. So I was excited to have a permanent fix, but I can't for the life of me understand why no one else is excited. So what's the other end of excitement? Nauseausness. So we have to make a choice as a community. Do we want to be nauseous? Do we want to be excited? And the only way you can get excited is if everyone realizes, dust off, that she could have, who should we blame? Let's do this for our kids. I too have doors that came through. Why be involved is because I care and I know the quality of our staff and the effort they put in. I know our student class sizes. I went to school on the south side of Chicago. I had 30, all right? My freshman class in high school was 990. When I graduated, it was 550. What happened to the other 400 or so? I always have cared about those that have been left behind, and I just need everyone else to be there with us. This is, I can tell you, in the private sector, seven figures is a big deal. And to your point, our saying in the private sector is, hey, it's only so many programs. And so this really hurts because I know there are surrounding communities that are in excess, and we are not. And, you know, this really hurts me. And personally, I feel like I have let down not only the community, the board, staff, everyone. Because I assumed when we got to this point, I was excited, Shelley, we said, hey, look, we got a permanent fix now. Everyone else will be excited. So we just got to choose, do we want to be excited, do we want to be nauseous? That's all I, I want to be excited and I want to stay fired up about this. And I just think that this is a point, thank you for this, because I'm hoping this is that cold water that those that are like, eh, it doesn't bother me, you know, they'll figure it out. This also impacts our real estate values. We get nothing from that corridor that everyone loves and the new developments. We, it's just, I agree with you, Jim, and I'll stop here in saying that there's so much misinformation out there. And unfortunately, in our society, people don't spend the time to just read. Because if they see this, well done, I hate that we have to get to this point, but it's our duty to be prepared.
Anyone else want to say anything? Okay, so I'm just gonna finish this conversation with, we have four weeks, four weeks, 28 days. We need to make each day count so we can continue to be the district that we want to be. Every single person who cares, whether they're at this board table or in the community, every single person who cares, there is something for you to do to preserve Homewood School District 153. Okay.
I actually would like to say something, Shelley. I'm sorry. I, like everyone else was saying, when you see these numbers in these positions, it's real. My family and I moved here 16 years ago, and we moved from a totally different state. And we moved to Homewood specifically for the schools. And everyone knows that I'm a teacher as well. I teach preschool. And when I think about having 25 kindergarters in a class, or even 20, that's unreal. That's a lot of kids. And it puts a lot of pressure on teachers and doesn't do the kids justice when you're a teacher in the classroom. When I teach my kids and I talk to them about all the exciting things that they're going to have when they go to Willow, and I tell them about all the wonderful kindergarten teachers. And when we have the presentation here today, and I see so many teachers here who were awarded, and many of them my kids had. And I see how much we value our teachers and how much we value our programs. Like, everyone knows, my family is a big band choir orchestra family. We are big into music, and to see that have to go away with our assistant teachers and our other positions, like everyone else said, that is extremely heartbreaking. And I just, I really hope that we do not get to that point because that will be so devastating to our community. So thank you, Scott, for all your work in doing this. And I just hope that people look at this and really see that this is, this is real. This is real life, and we gotta, you know, we gotta get busy. And we gotta pass this referendum and make it go through if we want to keep our schools and our community's great the way that they are now. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, let's move on to some of the other business we have to do tonight. We have consent agenda. We need to add to that. We need to add to that the approval of the resolutions that were read tonight. So number one, we need to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for November 2022. And we have a personnel report.
Yes. As always, we are busy with different personnel items, some resignations, but also finding some people to fill in for people who are out. So you can read the specifics in the report.
Thank you. And then we need to approve the resolutions as presented earlier. Are there any questions on the consent agenda items? Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented in seven, in item seven A and seven B, and the resolutions for the Tom Docweiler Awards, the Jerry Morin Educational Excellence Awards, and the Support Staff Educational Excellence Awards.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Habecorst?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. We have two action agenda items tonight. The first is the second payment of September 2022 bills and the first payment of October 2022 bills. Are there any questions on the bills?
No.
Is there a motion?
Move upon the recommendation of the chief school business official at the Board of Education authorize the second payment of September 2022 bills and the first payment of October 2022 bills in an amount not to exceed three million, one hundred, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred, seventy dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Habecorst?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. We have employment.
Yes, Dr. Schnorr was able to find a PE teacher who is currently student teaching, finishing his coursework, and we are looking to hire him at the start of second semester in January. So Gil Loza, a PE teacher at Churchill.
Any questions? Well done. Is there a motion?
Move upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of terms, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent condition, only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than October 31, 2022, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Habecorst?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. Do we have any discussion items tonight?
No.
Any written communication to the board?
No, ma'am.
The last item on the agenda is adjournment. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. See you guys next month and many times between now and then.
Yes.